It's time for another episode of I Am Northwest Arkansas, the podcast covering the intersection of business, culture, entrepreneurship, and life in general here in the Ozarks. Whether you are considering a move to this area or trying to learn more about the place you call home, we've got something special for you. Here's our host, Randy Wilburn.
Hey folks, and welcome to another episode of I Am Northwest Arkansas. I'm your host, Randy Wilburn, and I'm excited to be with you today for a great episode that I think we have in store with DeAndre Jones. DeAndre is a friend of mine, someone that we met. We actually met through the Rotary, the Fayetteville Rotary, and we fast became friends. And DeAndre is just an exciting individual that I think this past summer was unlike any other for him. And I'll let him be the judge of that and talk more about it. But DeAndre Jones is one of, I think, the second African American to serve as a Fayetteville City Councilor. He just got elected and just took the oath of office last month, I believe, at the time of recording this. This is February of 2021. And so, without further ado, DeAndre Jones, how are you doing today?
Randy, I am doing great. And how are you?
I'm doing good. I'm doing, I'm cold because the day that we're recording this, it's like zero. I mean, I sent a picture out yesterday on Facebook, oh, no, on Instagram, and I'd circled the temperature in my car. I'd never seen nine degrees register in my car. And now it's zero degrees. I'm not even getting in my car today. But the bottom line is, this weather is reserved for New England and the Northeast where I came from and moved here. And I was telling somebody, they were like, I just moved here and I never thought the weather would be like this. And I'm like, well, you know, in six years, I've experienced two appreciable snowstorms, one being like, early on when I first got here in 2014, early 2015, and then again, like right now, like, because I mean, we've had some snow before that, but it would be, it snowed and then it's gone. This ain't leaving tomorrow. And especially with the weather being what it is, I don't think it's going away that that soon.
You're absolutely right. It's going to stick around for a while. And I want to say thank you so very much for having me on. And thank you for the amazing work that you do here with I Am Northwest Arkansas. And as a Rotarian, thank you so very much for everything that you do, and certainly, certainly making Northwest Arkansas a better place for all of us.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. You know, I just kind of filled a need where I saw one, I saw a hole, and I said, you know, I'm gonna do this because this would be something, you know, DeAndre, I wanted something like this when I first moved here, so I could learn about what Northwest Arkansas is all about. So that's why we bring on people like you and so many others that make up what I call the tapestry of Northwest Arkansas. And that tapestry is many colors, many ideas, you know, and it's just, it's varied, and I just enjoy it. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. That means the world to me. I would love for you just to give our audience a little bit about who DeAndre Jones is. Tell us your superhero origin story.
Thank you, Randy. Superhero origin story. Well, you're right. This summer was very, it was a summer like no other. And I found myself telling my story more than ever. When I decided to run for city council, one of the things that I made, I was very intentional and deliberate as it relates to making it more people oriented. And my message was people over politics. And Randy, you know, just as well as I do, that especially right now, the word politics can be, due to lack of a better word, distasteful for so many people. And I feel as though that politics, everything that we do, everything that we do in this country is, has somewhat of a, has a political impact. And as it relates to running for public office and being elected, I do believe that we need individuals who care about people and who are committed to putting people first. And how do you do that? How do you put people first? How does that come about? Do you learn it? You can. But for myself, as it relates to what you described, my superhero story, I grew up in poverty. And my grandfather told me this, my grandfather, and I didn't know this, Randy, until last week. My grandfather was the very first African American man, he was a pastor in Joiner, Arkansas. Joiner is a town of about, no more than 500 people nestled between St. Louis and actually 30 miles north of Memphis. And so, my grandfather was the very first African American to work for John Deere. But he told me this, he said, I need you to be what you needed someone to be growing up. And he was, of course, referring to me when I was younger. And what did I need? I needed a mentor. I needed, I grew up, my father wasn't in the home, so I needed a father figure. We were poor, so we needed resources. And as it relates to community change and social change, we needed politicians or those in public office who cared. So I desired to be just that. And that has inspired my activism long before I got, long before I became a member of the Fayetteville City Council, even prior to running. And in the work that I've done in the community, working with, on various boards and commissions, growing up in poverty, we all know that you are disadvantaged on so many levels. And I wanted to be a part of the change. I wanted to be a part of the solution. And I wanted to inspire people and giving folks something to believe in. So, growing up, graduating from Rivercrest High School, attending the University of Arkansas, and having opportunities, even growing up in Joiner where opportunities are very limited, I was blessed with the opportunity, in addition to serving on the city council, I worked for a US Congressman, Marion Berry, of the first congressional district, worked in the school district. And of course, we all know in small town Arkansas, your local churches, that is where everything happens. And so, I grew up with a strong, strong, strong belief in God, very, very, very strong spiritual foundation. But with that spiritual foundation, I continued to see that there were opportunities. And I felt as if living in Joiner, because there were so few opportunities, what could I do to make a difference? Because could I stay in Joiner and make a difference with few opportunities? That would be, that would have been extremely difficult. So, I decided to move to Fayetteville, and I finished my degree at the University of Arkansas. And this took place, I moved here in 2006, after the death of my grandfather, my grandmother, and my dad, I decided to relocate to Fayetteville and finish my degree at the University of Arkansas. And those of you who haven't heard this, and Randy, I may have shared this with you at some point, but I moved to Fayetteville the very first time I ever, I ever rode a Greyhound bus, I ever traveled, rather, on a Greyhound bus, was coming from Joiner to Fayetteville with one plastic bag. I was at probably one of the most broken, one of the most challenging times in my life. I was very broken emotionally. Life had dealt a blow, devastated, personal reasons. And so, the only thing else was, my options were few. And it was either deal with it there, again, with fewer resources, or relocate to Northwest Arkansas to Fayetteville and start over. And so, I was very blessed to be able to start over. And I took a job at JB Hahn, and I've worked in, of course, corporate America, Walmart, I've worked in different places. And, but however, my mind continued to, my thoughts, rather, were focused on making a difference. And so, and my grandfather, being what you need someone, being what you need, being what you needed. And so, I became involved in numerous organizations throughout Northwest Arkansas and the Fayetteville area, focusing on meeting the need, focusing on being a part of the solution. And that brought me to running for office again in 20, the first time I ran for office here in Fayetteville was 2014, and I actually lived and worked for. And my campaign slogan was centered around people. And I tell folk this, I knew that I wouldn't win. I knew that. I didn't run to win, I ran for experience. And so, I got the experience that I needed because there were six individuals and I finished number three. So, not too terribly bad for someone who, I'd only lived eight years, and most of my opponents, they were fully vested in the community. So, but again, I learned a lot, and I became more active. And then, in 2020, I decided to run again. And this time, I ran with the intention to win, for various reasons. Representation matters. And Fayetteville, we pride ourselves on being a compassionate community. We pride ourselves on diversity. We pride ourselves on equality. However, with my activism and my social work background, I noticed one thing was missing, Randy, and that was equity. And are we equitable? And I remember having a conversation with Mayor Jordan, and that equity came up. And a lot of people didn't quite understand it. Equality, I think we all get that, we all understand equality, but what about equity? And I believe that equity is making resources readily available and accessible. And I do believe that equity can be defined, we have four wards in Fayetteville, right? Each ward has a different concern. Each ward, I think there are different concerns and different needs. So, I think that we have to look at it from a perspective of, in order to level the playing field, we have to be equitable. So, that means, for me, if this ward needs not equally disseminating resources, but looking and saying, hey, in order for this ward to catch up with this ward, we have to invest more in this ward, if that makes sense.
Yep.
And so, I believe that because of my background, again, growing up in Joiner, and my social work background, and my role as an activist, and my love for people, my love for, to see people having the resources that they need to live a meaningful and focused life, the need for diverse representation, that really, really, really was a springboard to run for city council, and not just run, but to win, Randy. It was to run and win. I, you know, the experience that I had running in the previous races, even in Joiner, even my social work background, even serving on the numerous boards and commissions, I've had, that was the experience that I need, that was the practice. But now, it's time to run to win. And we were able to do that because we were focused on what was most important. And that is putting people over politics. When you're running for office, most of the time, you're knocking on doors, you're canvassing, you're asking folk for their vote. Well, we did that, but in a very different way. We were able to fill the pantries. We were able to do coke drives. We were able to engage the community and not just asking for their vote, but making a difference, meeting the needs as we go along, because I'm wanting to be what I needed growing up, or who I needed growing up. And so, every single day, we were asking ourselves, what can we do to make Fayetteville better while we're running? Not, not when we're elected, because folk need inspiration right now. Folk need motivation. Folk need encouragement. People need to be heard right now. We can't wait until November 3rd. We have to do what we have to do right now, because it's all about the people. And I remember, Randy, real quickly, I did my very first meet and greet in the park, and there was a gentleman that came, and he was homeless. And we gave him a t-shirt, and we gave him pizza, and shout out to Woodstone Pizza, because it was amazing. And toward the end, we gave him what was left over and plenty of water. And I remember him leaving, and I've got a good friend that works at Walgreens. And so, she reached out to me and she said, that gentleman came in Walgreens, and he was telling everybody, hey, do you know DeAndre Jones? I'm wearing his shirt. If you live in Ward, one vote for him. He's a good man. He gave me pizza, he gave me water, and his t-shirt. And the very next day, Randy, I saw two to three homeless individuals wearing my shirt. And that, that alone, I mean, seeing that, I'm like, wow, you know, this is, this is why I'm running. And I told my campaign staff, we must be intentional and deliberate. When individuals come in, whether they're writing a thousand dollar check, or whether they're needing something out of the pantry, we're not going to make a difference based on social status and things of that nature. We're going to treat everyone the way they deserve to be treated, and that is with dignity and respect. And so, I said all that to say, you know, I'm continuing that same philosophy, that same commitment, serving as a member of the city council.
Yeah, I love that. I mean, you, you just, I mean, you laid it out nice and clear. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward, you know, what you've been able to do in a short period of time. And certainly, you, you, you know, that's one thing that you, we struggle sometimes with, with politicians. They talk about what they're gonna do, and then, you know, nothing, you don't see anything in advance. So, you know, it's just, okay, I'll wait till this day in the future when I vote you in office, and then I'll expect all these great things to happen. But I think, you know, you got a chance to really practice what you preach, if you will, with all the time leading up to the election this past year, as well as just all of the social events that were happening, that, you know, created a reason for there to be real conversation and real talk about, you know, inclusion, about equity, about fairness, about racial rights and reconciliation, and so many other, you know, buzzwords that we talk about. But we, you know, we talk about them in big, audacious goals, as opposed to like, right on the ground. And I felt like you had experienced what it was like to deal with it right at the ground level, right where people were struggling the most.
Absolutely. And thank you, Randy, for pointing that out. And when you're voting for someone, I think, myself, we vote for individuals who can relate, and not just race. But let's be clear, representation matters. And if we're going to have a conversation concerning racial justice, then we've got to have black folk or other races in the room. And when we talk about racism in our community, when we talk about racial justice, we have to have the police department involved in the conversation. We have to have our law enforcement, judges, prosecutors, all have to be at the table, because this is a learning opportunity. And guess what? They carry out, I mean, they are, the sentencing, the arrest, it has proven to impact African Americans more than any other group. So, why wouldn't we invite the various groups to a seat at the table, when we're all at the table together, when impacted folk can speak truth to power? And I think that we must continue to be intentional and deliberate. If we want change, then we have to allow individuals who have been impacted to speak truth to power. And I will say this, because of that, I've been able to forge some great relationships with law enforcement, with our judges, our prosecutors. And whenever there's a need, I'm able to reach out to them. And because of what you described, that conversation, that education about racial justice, it's really, really been proven to be beneficial and impactful. Because what we don't know, we don't know. And so, as a representative, even though black people aren't monolithic, because I am African American, and I've been impacted, and I understand a lot of the challenges, I'm able to articulate that to folk who enforce laws, and those who make a difference on so many levels.
Yeah. You know, and it's funny, and I want to bring this up, because it is a, it's a challenge that sometimes African Americans in public office face, right? Is that, you know, again, when people look at, it's just like the art, the issue, and again, I don't talk about politics for the most part on this podcast, but, you know, it's just like the issue that a lot of people have, that, you know, if a black person is for a former President Trump, you know, people are upset. And it's like, why are you for Trump? You should be for whoever, anybody but Trump, or in this case, somebody on the Democratic side. And it's like, you know, African Americans have long been a very resilient, very multivariate group of people with a lot of different mindsets and thoughts. And one of the challenges, I think, that a lot of people cannot appreciate unless you're actually part of the black community, is the challenge that a, a black political figure has with trying to adhere to quote unquote, the tenants that African Americans believe you should have as a politician, right? So, case in point, for you would be, why would you be so cozy with the police? Because the police have been adversarial historically for African Americans. And I'm not speaking specifically of police in Northwest Arkansas. I could fill, I could insert the name of any major city and say that there is always some animus between the African American community and police. It's just what it is. I mean, whether you want to acknowledge it or not. But you chose to work from the inside. And even, even though you knew in the back of your mind, hey, you know, I'm gonna get some blowback from my folks, people aren't gonna understand why I'm doing this. I mean, you and, and Chief Reynolds are very good friends. I'm referring to Chief Mike Reynolds, who is the police chief of Fayetteville. And you chose to work on the inside. You were part of the, I think it's the Civil Review Board at one point in time. And so, I think it's important that we have to get involved at, when I say we, I'm speaking as an African American. Now, I know I have a lot of white folks that listen to this podcast. This podcast is for everybody. But I'm just giving you guys a glimpse into this, the thought process here. We, meaning African Americans, have to get involved at all levels. And I think you chose to do that, and, and you took some blowback because of that. And I get it. And I totally understood what you were doing, because, you know, I learned a long time ago by watching my grandfather. My grandfather said, you know, you'll never get things if you don't fight for them, and you don't engage with people where they are. And so, my grandfather knew the mayor, he knew, and the town I grew up in, he knew all the city council members, he knew the police chief. And, you know, he was, he was right up front and said, hey, you, you know, this is my grandson, these are my, you know, just, you know, letting folks know. And, and people saw him all the time, and he was involved. But he addressed people where they were, and tried to work from all angles, and not just from an angle of, well, you know, the police aren't friends of the African American community, so we're gonna, you know, continue to bash them, as opposed to coming up with some type of solution, and trying to work from the inside out.
Randy, I couldn't have summed it up better. And to your point, I'm very grateful for the relationship that I have with Chief Reynolds. The Fayetteville Fraternal Order of Police, they did endorse me, and you're absolutely right, there was pushback. But what's so interesting about that, the pushback didn't necessarily come from the African American community. Because, because of my relationship with, as I described, with law enforcement, with the judges and prosecutors, there have been occasions where I've had to kind of, you know, go in and speak and advocate for different individuals, particularly in many cases, black men. And because of that, the outcome was different. Because of my being able to advocate and bridge building, things were different. So, I remember when I was at an event at a car wash, and there were a group of African American males there, and they said, DeAndre, we're very thankful that you're able to talk to the police, because we don't want to. But we believe because you're there, it's better for us. And I remember, uh, serving as chair of Mayor, Mayor Jordan's African American Advisory Council. Chief Reynolds came in right when, after he was hired, and I think this was October of 2019, he came in. And at that time, there were, there was a big issue with African Americans being arrested more than any other group for misdemeanor marijuana. And those numbers were, I mean, they were pretty high. And Mike met with us, and we had a great conversation. And immediately, we began to see those numbers decrease.
Yeah.
And continue to decrease. And I remember the protest, and I, Randy, I think you were there, the George Floyd protest on the square.
In July, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. And I remember speaking, and the organizer called me that morning, and he said, Mr. Jones, we need a leader in the African American community. And since you're the chairman of the advisory council, would you care to speak this evening at the George Floyd protest? I said, okay, what do you want me to do? And he said, we want it to be peaceful. I said, that I can do. And prior to, prior to speaking, I called Mike, and we met, and I said, Mike, this is an opportunity for the country, for the city, or whoever's watching, to see that the Fayetteville Police Department and the black community, we've had a longstanding relationship. And I can point to specifics. And so, and it wasn't, it wasn't that we were promoting the police, we were promoting what was need, what I felt needed for the community to see, that bridge building, we're working peacefully, we're working together. And we can show you that what did, how the numbers decreased in an area that had really been impacted, how, where African Americans had been adversely impacted. And from what I understand, that night, so many tons and tons and tons of people, they reached out to me, and they were very glad because of the outcome. It was very peaceful. And it showed Fayetteville standing together. We were able to agree that Black Lives Matter, and that what happened to George Floyd was terrible, and that police reform was needed. And so, we all agree on those things. And so, with that being said, we, we were able to identify what's needed to, to move our community forward, and agreeing that everyone, that health and safety is a right for everyone. And I often tell folks this, black people that I spoke to, Randy, they're not saying that they're anti-police. They just want to be treated fairly. That's it. That's it. And I'm so thankful to know that I'm able to be at the table with the Fayetteville Police Department and have that conversation as it relates to making sure that black people don't feel profiled, or they don't feel that, hey, I'm living in Fayetteville. And the very moment that I see an officer, I feel that I fear my life. That culture is not, that's not a good culture for any of us. You know, you have kids. And so, when I think about the work that I do, it's going to impact Fayetteville for generations to generations. Because I do believe that it's very important for us to strengthen our health and safety. In this case, our police department, making sure that they have all the resources that they need, the training, that they have everything that they need to protect and serve all of us with equity. And so, I believe that as a public official, as a community activist, I can't afford to have a personal axe to grind, and that can't be my, that can't inform my political beliefs. I have to look out for everyone. I have to look out for everyone. And so, since I'm at the table, we collaborate, we have those difficult conversations. And because of that, I went to Walmart right after the protest, and I remember an African American male telling me, he said, DeAndre, I've lived in Fayetteville for X amount of years. And today, I was at a stoplight, and I saw an officer, and for the very first time, I didn't fear my life. I didn't get scared. And countless stories where people feel, but hey, you know, Fayetteville police, they're just not that bad. I mean, they're just not that bad. I mean, it's not what people think. The pushback came from individuals who had another political perspective. And they, you know, they had their own ways of addressing social, uh, social issues. And that's just, I believe that working, that collaborating and working from the inside, as you described it, will get far, has, will get us, will produce better results than being critical. I just believe that.
Yeah. And I think, and that is, certainly is a challenge. And I know some of the allies that you were, you're speaking of, that, you know, kind of approached it from a different perspective, right? And I think, you know, and that's the challenge, right? I think we're all passionate, all trying to ultimately see the same result or goal, but sometimes our approaches are different. And it's not that either one is bad. I just, I think sometimes people have a personal preference. And if you have the skill set and ability to work from the inside out, then you should do that. And I think we should all actually seek, do that. I mean, you know, you know, the old expression, and you, you grew up in an area where you get more bees with honey than you do with anything else. I mean, that's just the way it is. It's, that's just how I was raised. And that, those, those are some of the experiences that I've had. But I know people that are listening to this may disagree, and that's fine. I'm just pointing out one, this is just one way to approach it. And so, I would say that throughout that whole process in 2020, you were able to really mature in the way that you approached this. And it has developed a framework for you that you're gonna use moving forward.
Absolutely. You, oh my God, you said it perfectly. Maturity, maturity, maturity. Every day, I woke up, and of course, this is politics. And I'm like, okay, what's gonna happen today? Because, I mean, people, they come at you from various directions, because, you know, it's just the name of the game. But I remain true to my convictions. And I would often tell my campaign staff, this election is too important for the city of Fayetteville to allow us to get distracted on something that we know that's not true. We have to focus on the truth. What is the truth? Folk need diverse and equitable representation. I have a skill set that Fayetteville needs, and a skill set that's going to move Fayetteville forward. And I'm not bragging on myself. But, I mean, when we look at our city, what was missing, I offered what was missing. And so, we've got too many people who are relying on my leadership to make a difference, and to create a more equitable Fayetteville. And so, every single day, I told my campaign staff, no matter what you hear, no matter what you see, remember the goal. And our goal is to win. And our goal is to represent, because this, again, this is race, this race is too important. And I remember having a conversation about the protest. And I did say this, and I was very adamant about this, we had over 4,500 to 5,000 people that evening at the square. And that was not the right opportunity, at least I don't think it was, to prove that, oh, the Fayetteville Police Department is racist. That's not the time and place for that. That's not the time and place to try to show that the police department, that they're, that they're racist. Because what would have happened? A black or brown person could have been impacted, and then we know what that looks like once they're in the system. I mean, it's being booked in, and then from what I understand, that takes 12 hours, and then going to court, and that whole process. So, if you care about black lives, and I say this, if you care about black people, number one, you'll listen to black people and follow the lead of black people. And then, you would look at it from a perspective of, I'm going to do, as an ally, as we mentioned, there's a place. And my place is not to tell black people how they should react to police brutality or anything else. And so I was able to shake that where we need to empower folk to speak, not speak for people. We have to empower, I, there were campaigning, Randy, I, there were five or six different young black men who spoke up for me and said, because of Deandre's involvement with the police, I didn't get a felony. I didn't go to jail, but I empowered them to speak for themselves by forming, by having, having a relationship with the police department and again, law enforcement, the judges and prosecutors, and setting up meetings and having these young men, they were able to speak for themselves. And they saw that and that, that, that they, from what I understand, they believe in system because they went out and they voted. And not only did they vote, their homeboys voted, their family members voted and not once, but twice because I gave them something to believe in.
So, yeah, no, I mean, that's, I mean, that's it in a nutshell, I think. And I think, again, you've created awareness and a level of involvement with people that A, have historically felt disenfranchised and B, have felt like, wow, you know, we've got a seat at the table. Let's see what we can do with that. So let's talk about that a little bit because I want to transition this conversation now that you have this seat at the table and you are, you know, councilman Deandre Jones for everybody in Fayetteville. What are your hopes for Fayetteville as a whole? What are you hoping to see happen? I mean, this is a city with one of the top schools in the country, a city with probably the top or if not in the top three libraries in all of the country. I don't know if you've been, you, I know you've been to the extension of the library. I mean, what David Johnson and those guys have done there is nothing short of incredible. I'm proud to talk about it. I will talk about it every day. I mean, you're in a city that is still evolving. People are relocating here. People are coming to Northwest Arkansas at a clip of, and I don't know what the statistics are during the pandemic, but pre-pandemic, it was 32 new people a day. So this place is growing. What are you hoping to see come to pass, especially in Fayetteville? But you can speak the, of the broader collective of Northwest Arkansas in the next few years.
Absolutely. Randy, I described when I came to Fayetteville, came very humbly. I'm wanting to create that Fayetteville for everyone, regardless of who you love, color of your skin. Want to create a place that's resourceful, wanting to create a place where there are opportunities so individuals can live a meaningful and focused life. But with that being said, we look at that economically and that's a big part of it. But socially also being able to acceptance, tolerance, treating everyone the same. And when we look at police and fire, health and safety, having a safe neighborhood. When we think about the pandemic, Fayetteville's response was amazing, creating a board of health because the pandemic impacted every last one of us. So we have to be intentional and deliberate that we are creating opportunities that every person can benefit from. However, we do have to have a pulse of the underprivileged. I believe when we live from the bottom, everybody rises. And you're right, are coming in from Fayetteville from all walks of life and they're coming with good jobs and they're coming with no job. And we have to meet the needs for both groups. And that's what I'm wanting to create. I'm wanting to create an equitable, inclusive Fayetteville where individuals are able to sustain, whether that sustainment is business opportunities, whether that sustainment is education, whatever it is that we are a resourceful community and that we're open to individuals from every walk of life. And I do believe that when that becomes our commitment, we will flourish, we'll flourish economically. We will flourish with our education because people want to come to a community that's inviting and that's equitable. We want to create and continue creating an opportunity where there are no barriers and where there are barriers, we're able to address them and we're able to understand those barriers. Because we live in a world that there are going to be barriers, but our city government must understand those barriers. We have to have a pulse of those barriers. What are folk dealing with? Because I believe that with the growth, again, we're seeing people with, they're very resourceful and those that are not. So do we create resources for those who are resourceful? Or do we focus on, hmm, these individuals who may not have very much coming from the Delta or other parts? What can we do? There's job development. You mentioned education, workforce development. Everybody doesn't, may not want to go to U of A and get a college degree and that's fine. But workforce development, having these opportunities to vocational schools. If you want to go to U of A, having that pathway to success. And then those individuals who are more resourceful, making sure that they can continue to thrive and even do better. It's a community where there's something for everyone. And I think that it's difficult to, for me to narrow it down. I'm committed wherever it's needed. That's my commitment. That's my commitment and to advance us as it relates to continuing, continuing to lead the state. Fayetteville, we've led the state. When you think about it, Randy, oh my God, man, we've led the state with the, with our response to the pandemic. We've led the state as it relates to racial justice. Fayetteville was the very first city in the state to black history. And in 1997, Fayetteville, Arkansas had a Black Lives Matter banner on Dixon Street. So we are known for leading the way and the thinking more tangible results opposed to vanity projects, where it's going to make a difference in the lives of individuals, generations to come. And we're building up, we're building so we can have a stronger generation, making sure that our schools have access. Our schools are able to meet the needs of an evolving community, making sure that we're getting the right teachers. And that comes with the school district and the city of Fayetteville having a relationship. The city of Fayetteville and the University of Arkansas having a partnership and the city council being able to manage the growth by understanding the barriers that folk are facing, moving here and the individuals who need the help the most, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does. I mean, it's, and bottom line is you got your work cut out for you. There's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done, but I think you're certainly the man for the job. And as we wrap up, I would love for you to kind of share with our listening audience, some of the things that you enjoy doing when you're not out, as I like to say, fighting the good fight. What, what does Deandre do? I know we went and enjoyed a lunch together one time. It was just Jason's deli, but, but we, we had a good time. But I mean, what do you like to do when you let your hair down, if you will, and just relax?
I love to interior design. That's one of the things that takes my, it puts me in a place of, um, it cheers me up. I feel good because I'm able to create something that people are proud of. I like to travel. I love the beach, especially right now. So traveling, yes, interior design, reading. I like to read and writing. I started college, I was a journalism major before I graduated with my degree in education. And I love spending time with my godchildren. I love spending time with them, but the pandemic has limited that. And that's basically it. And of course, you know, going out and eating and working out now, I'm, I'm getting back slowly and surely. I'm working out more. So those things, I don't have a lot of hobbies. I'm not a big TV person, but I do like going to the movies. I would rather go see a movie than watch TV because I'm all, I'm so busy, I can't watch. I don't have time to sit and watch a TV show, but if there's a movie, I'll go watch a movie, enjoy going to the movies. And also too, let me not forget this, I'm a huge Razorback football fan, big Razorback football fan. So that pretty much sums it up.
Okay. So tell me this, when it comes to getting out and eating, do you have a favorite restaurant?
In Fayetteville, actually, no. I'm one of these people though, I don't like, and not that I don't like, but I love to do, to eat at restaurants that are not chains. I'm more of a, a smaller, something that's probably more exclusive sometimes. But then there are moments that if I'm hungry, it's really based on if I'm hungry. So I don't really have a favorite place, but I do prefer, especially when I'm hosting. If I'm hosting friends or family, then I always take them to somewhere that they can't get wherever they're from. And that's either old post office, I mean, there are a ton of them, but yeah, we, we typically, we'll typically go somewhere in Fayetteville that they can't get back home.
I got you. Okay. Well, that's good. That's good. You mentioned reading, what, what book have you read recently that really moved you?
The book that I read recently, oh my goodness, it's two. One of them that I've read recently, it's, and honestly, it's about the one white fragility. I know that's crazy, but it's not crazy, but people are not prepared to hear that. But then I'll take that back and I'll explain white fragility in a second. James Clyburn's book, the newest one, and I'd have to look it up, but that, his newest book, it inspires me because of his political, his politics, his, his life story. It's amazing and I can relate and it inspires me. Randy, everything that I read has to give me inspiration.
Sure.
It has to. I, I can't read any, anything that doesn't, why we can't wait, why we can't wait. Yes, that is, I, I read that and it is, I'm very thankful. And also Rick Warren's Purpose Driven Life, even though that's an older one. But, but going back to white fragility, I'm a fan of Robin D'Angelo. And I facilitated the discussion and every time I read it, I get something more. Every time I read it, I get a different meaning. So, and I'll just randomly read it and I'm like, okay, wow, you know, this, I didn't get this the last time. But right now, James Clyburn, why we can't wait. Especially again, now being on the city council, it's very, very, it's so relatable. It's very timely. It's what I need.
Okay. All right. Well, there you go. Well, man, I love that. If people want to connect with you, what's the easiest way for them to do that?
Oh, the easiest way to connect with me is probably on social media. I get people, they inbox me all the time, but now things are a little different. So it's real easy to go to the city hall website and deandre.jones@fayettevillear.gov. And I respond back to my emails. I do my very best to respond in a very timely manner. But if you want to get me, email me and I will respond or Facebook message me. Either one of the two, because I'm on the go so much and I'll see those instantly. So yeah, that's the best way to email me at my city council email or reach out to me on Facebook. I'm on Instagram, but I'm not on Instagram as much. And so with Facebook, I'll see it immediately and then we'll be able to carry on from there.
Okay. Well, perfect. And we'll put all of that in the show notes so that people who are listening to this, you might be driving, you might be running. And certainly we'll make sure that we have value of all that information. So you can reach out with City Councilman Deandre Jones and connect with him. Tell him what you thought about this podcast episode, tell him what you think about Fayetteville and you know, maybe some issues or challenges, especially if you're in his district, which is District One. Then that is the district represented by Deandre Jones. And so, Deandre, thank you so much for coming on the I Am Northwest Arkansas Podcast. I really appreciate you. I appreciate you sharing your story, being transparent with our audience. And certainly we hope that everybody that had a chance to listen today got a better take on who Deandre Jones is. And we'll be rooting for you as we root for all of our city council members. Because if one of us is successful, all of us are successful.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, Randy, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That last part, we're in this together. And so please feel at any time, any questions, any concerns, let me know. And I'm here to do whatever I can to make a good difference.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much, man. We'll be in touch soon and appreciate it.
All right. You have a great one.
Yep. That's another episode of the I Am Northwest Arkansas Podcast. To learn more about us or to read or download the show notes from today's episode, visit iamnorthwestarkansas.com. You can listen to this podcast and sign up for our free newsletter to keep up with us and all things NWA. Make sure you sign up today. You can also subscribe to the I Am Northwest Arkansas Podcast wherever you listen to it. And please consider rating and reviewing us on Apple Podcasts. Our podcast comes out every Monday like clockwork. I'm your host, Randy Wilburn, and we'll see you back here next week for a new episode of the I Am Northwest Arkansas Podcast. Peace.
We hope you enjoyed this episode of I Am Northwest Arkansas. Check us out each and every week, available anywhere that great podcasts can be found. For show notes or more information on becoming a guest, visit iamnorthwestarkansas.com. We'll see you next week on I Am Northwest Arkansas.